I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Call the councilman to order. And if you have time, Todd will be in shortly. He's the clerk who will arrest him. And we do have a consent agenda tonight with treasures approved with minutes at the April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, and a full panel of twelve. We have the treasure report, please.
May seventh, two thousand nineteen, Treasurers report there were payable checks in the amount of five hundred four thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. There were made nine major vendor checks, which represent eighty-five percent of the payable checks. Those nine checks total four hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. Payroll for May third to include social security and Medicare taxes, one hundred forty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and eight cents. Monthly bond payments, series nineteen ninety-eight and nineteen ninety-nine sewer revenue bond, three thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Series two thousand five M A M U, thirty-five thousand twenty-two dollars and eighty cents. Series twenty-ten land lease purchase, Saint Robert Landing Superior Road, thirteen thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. I forty-four land, three hundred and sixty acre, three hundred and sixty acres, ten thousand dollars. Platner Park, Dean and Alice Ready, two thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. Total monthly bond payment, sixty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Grand total payable checks, payroll, electric bill, and bond payments, seven hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-two cents.
Will you put a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Michael to the second. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, hold the rulebook list under section three. Three point one is an ordinance approving the firm of an authorized mayor to execute a service agreement between Mogaz Pipeline LLC and the city of Saint Robert. We actually have two sections on that. Place the few.
Let me explain this. Oh, the settlement with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is a little different than most places. The supplier, the gas line, can do a unilateral tariff which it raises, and then it can settle it by a stipulation which it itself makes. Now, this is about two inches of paper, but basically if we sign the service agreement with Mogaz, then we authorize the stipulation and settlement of FERC. Stipulation and settlement of FERC is a twenty-nine fifty. Our present rate on their tariffs is fifty-one nine. And now, here's what happens. If everybody approves, and that's for us, Cuba, Saint James, Waynesville, and Saint Robert, then FERC has to approve it, and that's going to take six months or so. There is a procedure where our attorney can ask for an earlier approval by FERC if everybody signs. We intend to do that. Now, we get, I believe, five percent interest on our money when they rebate it at the end of six or seven months. So, we'll get our money back, but we're going to be stuck in the hole unless we get that early go. Now, what we've done here is this service agreement, we have to have it back to our council by the tenth. So, now, what I've done is Saint James has already passed it. I've already sent our material to Waynesville so they have it.
They're passing it. They're doing it.
And I talked to, I talked to Bruce today, and he's going to add in there the approval for Steve to do the settlement. He's going to put it in his ordinance. So, basically, this is approve our normal settlement. It's five years. There is a if Formwood closes, there's a closure thing there that we can break it down fifty percent. And so, everything we've discussed.
And then it's a five-year renewal of the settlement.
Yeah, and so, everything that we've discussed for a year is in place now. A lot of hard work, and really, our council did one of the job when we had to work with it.
Actually, Spire and Saint Louis has to agree. Amherst has several takes on the pipeline, plus the four municipalities. And so, it's very complicated because every group had their own little things, and so, it's a package that's going to FERC, which makes a very complicated package. But we should be at twenty-nine fifty, and we've agreed at that. So, hopefully, we'll get reimbursed in September for the over two of them paid. Okay? Questions?
So, this is, this is all to do with what we talked about earlier?
Yeah, this is about the transportation of the natural gas.
Right, and they were going to add so much, it was going to cost a lot, right?
Yeah, it was going to be fifty-two dollars a MCF, but the agreement is a twenty-nine fifty.
Okay.
Okay? So, it's a reduction.
And if it goes lower than that, we get a rebate, is that what you said?
It does not go below that.
It does not go below that.
We have to pay five until.
Oh, okay, until.
Their, their tariff rate.
Okay.
Until the final judgment from FERC.
And then we'll get back anything from twenty-one?
We get a rebate from that money plus five percent.
Okay.
From the fifty-two to the twenty-nine fifty.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, but this is a fixed cost that will be in place for ten years.
Okay.
On the transportation of the gas, not cost of the gas.
Right, just getting it to us.
Mayor, do you recall what the cost was before they made this big tariff?
Yeah, it was like, I don't know, you remember what the cost was that we were paying?
Twenty-two, what we were paying?
Yeah, I don't know if it's twenty-one or twenty-two.
Yes, that's like.
And it was in the joint fifty. It was settled at twenty-nine fifty.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We negotiated twenty-two fifty before.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, it's eleven, twelve, thirteen percent, somewhere in that range that it's going up. But we've been supplementing the twenty-nine fifty and fifty-two at about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a month.
A month, yeah.
And we will do that through September, probably, and then get reimbursed that eight months times twenty-five thousand, so. With interest.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, guys, you want to read that first reading of the bill?
Bill number nineteen oh three eight, an ordinance approving the form of an authorization of mayor to execute a service agreement between Mogaz Pipeline LLC and the city of Saint Robert.
Oh, thirty-eight was the bill number? Oh, three eight?
Yeah. Oh, three eight, didn't I read it right?
No, I just didn't hear. I was putting something in the hole.
Loudmouth didn't see it very well, I'll do it next time.
Well, I have it five, just remember that. Okay, give a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Okay, thank you. Second reading?
Bill number nineteen oh three eight, an ordinance approving the form of an authorization of mayor to execute a service agreement between Mogaz Pipeline LLC and the city of Saint Robert.
Yeah, motion on the second reading. Motion. Walter makes a motion, John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three three six five, an ordinance approving the form of an authorization of mayor to execute a service agreement between Mogaz Pipeline LLC and the city of Saint Robert.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Michael makes a motion. Susan seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Too many other meetings.
Yes. Linda?
Yes, I said yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Second part of that, still on the gas.
What we're doing here, if we do not believe we need to execute anything with FERC, but just in case we do, we're going to authorize the mayor to do it, okay? Well, we also hope in section four are authorizing Mr. Pearson to exercise our authority here, and I think that's something that will happen.
And he's the attorney at the Washington D.C. referee.
He represents all four municipalities. So, that's what this is, basically.
Okay. Okay, read the bill, please.
Bill number nineteen oh three nine, an ordinance approving the form of an authorization of mayor to execute a stipulation agreement of settlement presented by Mogaz Pipeline LLC to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and authorizing the attorney Stephen C. Pearson to act on behalf of the city.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number oh three nine, an ordinance approving the form of an authorization of mayor to execute the stipulation or tack an agreement of settlement presented by Mogaz Pipeline LLC to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and authorizing attorney Stephen C. Pearson to act on behalf of the city.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three three six six, an ordinance approving the form of an authorization of mayor to execute stipulation and agreement of settlement presented by Mogaz Pipeline LLC to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and authorizing attorney Stephen C. Pearson to act on behalf of the city.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. John makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes, three point three, ordinance authorizing the mayor about the airport. We have some construction out there going on, and they've got a change order, basically, for the airport. But it's authorized as a three hundred fifty-nine thousand, I think this is the.
That's the change order for three hundred fifty-nine thousand?
No, it's not.
Oh.
Five hundred two million dollars, three hundred fifty-nine thousand, we're going to be able to draw on it, basically, to pay for the temporary term. So, read that as a bill, please.
Bill number nineteen oh four oh, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of Saint, the city of Saint Robert to execute an airport aid agreement between city of Waynesville, city of Saint Robert, Missouri Highway and Transportation Committee to fund the construction of a commercial terminal facility at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport and fix it in effective date.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Praying.
Walter makes a motion, John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number nineteen oh four oh, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Saint Robert to execute an airport aid agreement between city of Waynesville, city of Saint Robert, Missouri Highway and Transportation Committee to fund the construction of a commercial terminal facility at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport and fix it in effective date.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three three six seven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Saint Robert to execute an airport aid agreement between city of Waynesville, city of Saint Robert, and Missouri Highway and Transportation Committee to fund construction of a commercial terminal facility at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport and fix it in effective date.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, three point four is an ordinance approving the authorization. Basically, there's, because of the start of this thing, it was supposed to start back in October, got delayed till, I think they started in January, they had to extend the timing with the contractor. So, this is an amendment four to the contract to allow the money and all this stuff, to move it to January thirty-first, twenty-twenty's end date. Go ahead, read the bill.
Bill number nineteen oh four one, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor of the city of Saint Robert to execute amendment number four of the state lock grant agreement between the city of Waynesville, city of Saint Robert, Missouri Highway and Transportation Committee.
Get a motion on the first reading of the bill. Michael makes a motion.
Second.
Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number nineteen oh four one, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor of the city of Saint Robert to execute amendment number four of the state lock grant agreement between city of Waynesville, city of Saint Robert, and Missouri Highway and Transportation Committee.
Get a motion on the second reading. John makes a motion.
Second.
Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three three six eight, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor of the city of Saint Robert to execute amendment number four of the state lock grant agreement between the city of Waynesville, city of Saint Robert, and Missouri Highway and Transportation Committee.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Walter makes a motion, Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second page, three point four. Three point five, an ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account at the Saint Robert Transfer Station. So, this is a new customer we have over there. Even Construction LLC wants credit at the transfer station. Read the bill, please.
Bill number nineteen oh four two, an ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account at the Saint Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number nineteen oh four two, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account at the Saint Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Here.
Walter makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Hmm.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, three point six, the ordinance approving the purchase of a Kubota. It's not twenty-nine. About it, okay.
Did I read that as an ordinance?
No.
I don't think so.
Oh, the previous, oh, the previous one? Did I skip ahead? Okay.
Ordinance number three three six nine, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account of Saint Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance, I'm sorry.
Motion.
John makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Okay, now, we're on three point six. Full purchase of a Kubota, Kubota, mower, rear discharge, watching committee. I don't know if anybody's here from the committee wants Kubota.
I am, Reggie asked me to speak on it. We had three bids for this, and we selected the Kubota eleven, and this is budgeted money. Steve talked to us about the pieces of equipment. We came out with unanimous decision that Kubota was the best buy for the city.
Okay. Thank you. Read the bill, please.
Bill number nineteen oh four three, an ordinance approving the purchase of a Kubota ZD one-two-one-one dash sixty rear discharge mower with canopy for the public worship park.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Here.
Walter makes a motion, John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number nineteen oh four three, an ordinance approving the purchase of Kubota ZD one-two-one-one dash sixty rear discharge mower with canopy for the public worship park.
Get a motion on the second reading. Michael makes a motion.
Yes.
Susan seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three three seven oh, an ordinance approving the purchase of Kubota ZD one-two-one-one, rear discharge mower with canopy for the public worship.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. John makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Three point seven, approved purchase of a Henderson dump body and hoist. John, one five.
Yeah, it's the same situation, went through, we did these at the same time, even the next one that we're going to do as well. But these were, out of the four bids that we had for this grand truck equipment was the best buy for.
Okay.
And, and did we have one of these before, and it just broke down, and it's just not working anymore, or is it?
Yeah, it's a steering that tipped on its side, and we got twenty-three thousand for insurance, so we had to replace it.
Okay.
Okay, read the bill, please.
Bill number nineteen oh four four, ordinance approving the purchase of a Henderson dump body and hoist for the public worship park.
Get a motion on the first reading. John makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number nineteen dash oh four, an ordinance approving the purchase of a Henderson dump body and hoist for the public worship park.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Here.
Walter makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes, sir.
Read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three three seven one, an ordinance approving the purchase of a Henderson dump body and hoist for the public worship park.
Get a motion on, motion on the reading of the ordinance. John makes a motion.
Second.
Linda second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Now, next is the truck that dump body goes on, John?
Oh, yeah, well, ninety-nine thousand six-ten, that's the cost of this one. And this was the cheaper of the two bids that we had, and we'll meet the needs of the public works department as well. And again, it was budgeted money for the.
Yeah, a twenty-twenty international dump truck chassis, I guess, for lack of another term. Read the bill, please.
Bill number nineteen oh four five, an ordinance approving the purchase of a two-thousand-twenty international HV six-one-three dump truck for the public worship park.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Here.
Walter makes a motion, John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
So, it's just the truck itself, it's not the dump thing that goes on it, it's not the bed that goes on it?
The dump bed will go on this chassis, yes.
We already have the bed, and it's going on this chassis, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number nineteen oh four five, an ordinance approving the purchase of a two-thousand-twenty international HV six-one-three dump truck for the public worship park.
Get a motion on the second reading. Michael makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Read the ordinance, please. Okay. Three point nine, ordinance authorizing acceptance of Bogad Street in Highland Park. This went through planning, zoning, recommendation was to approve this. Basically, you told the criteria, and I think you made a recent change about the parking issue within that ordinance, so, yeah, it's over different billing. Okay, do I have, read us the bill? Bill number nineteen oh four six. Orders authorizing acceptance of Bogad Street in Highland Park Subdivision as a public city street. Got a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Yes.
Okay, three point nine, ordinance authorizing acceptance of Bogad Street in Highland Park Subdivision as a public city street. Got a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Bogads, where they built those new apartments over there, right? Okay, yes.
Anthony?
Second reading. Bill number nineteen oh four section. Orders authorizing acceptance of Bogad Street in Highland Park Subdivision as a public street. Got a motion on the second reading.
Yep.
Walter makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And now, if we do approve this, with only three, we accept, there's a one-year maintenance that goes by. Do we read this in the ordinance? Huh? No, we're going to right now.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you say. After we approve this, what? There's a...
There's a one-year maintenance that the owner has to maintain it.
Oh, okay.
Has to last for a year.
Okay.
Orders number three three seven three. Orders authorizing acceptance of Bogad Street in Highland Park Subdivision as a public city street. Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Okay.
Linda makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Yes.
Okay, three point ten, is an ordinance establishing temporary parking, street parking permits. We've hit a long ago, around three, four months for this, or longer. And basically, this is the best we can get for right now. Use common sense, neighborhoods work together, and gives us some outlets to see how well it works, and so, that's why we, the committee last night worked on it.
Right here, you know, one, four years old, huh? Oh, I don't have to tear apart, but, um, on here it says, "The Board of Alderman authorized the establishment of a procedure." We don't know what that procedure is, so...
It's down there, and it's the, that they call and obtain a permit through the police department. That's the procedure.
Okay, and it can be for three days?
Up to three days, yes.
Okay, and then when that three days is over, can they just go back and get it redone again, and again, and again, and again, and again? So that it becomes permanent parking?
No. This is for, in fact, kind of an event.
Okay.
Whether it's an emergency event, someone passes away, or whatever, where they got a birthday party?
Right.
That type of thing.
I understand that.
So it should be a couple hours is all it should be.
But I was also given the situation of a family that's got five or six cars and don't have room in their driveway for it.
Yeah, that's, this is not for that.
No.
For people to be allowed to park in the street.
Okay.
Because they got excess cars.
Okay. Look at section four.
Section four?
Is discretionary with the police chief. And, and the process starts at section three. And this is an exception to our no parking rule. And it's discretionary, it's temporary. And all we did is, if you look at section seven, we also changed section seven to say that this is an exception to, but we're, is it only an exception on a temporary basis?
Will they be given something they can put on their car so that...
They will, they will make the...
Like you used to get when you go on post, a temporary pass for on post?
We're trying to keep this where they notify the police, and then they have to identify those vehicles that they turn in. Because if the police come down there, they gotta be able to realize which cars are part of that two-foot.
Okay. You know, they could be easier just to give them something to slip in the window.
No, because then we gotta get into making things and passing them out more likely.
And the police officer that came over, what they intend to do is, what they told Perry, is they're gonna do...
It's all chance that's they came over there.
They're just gonna put the license plate in and then...
Yes.
And, and they're just gonna put the license plate into the system.
Oh, okay.
So that they can just check on the spot.
If a police officer comes and he said, "Hey, I got a bunch of cars out here," the dispatcher will go in there, run one of those plates, and it'll pop up while they're out there on the street.
I'm just playing devil's advocate here. If a, if a person...
Well, we have a lot of that.
If a person in the neighborhood says, "That car is parked on the street," and they're calling the police, if there was something there to tell them that they have a permit, then they wouldn't call the police.
Yeah, they talked about...
That's what I'm saying.
Putting the tag, that the, the person that does the application will tag those vehicles, which means that they turned it, so.
So if I want one of these permits, I can just make a phone call, according to this, right?
Yes.
Okay, section three, organization or company? I thought we were talking about a residential area. Why would an organization or company or...
Organization or company, yeah.
That's gotta be, you know, maybe...
Somebody needs home house care temporarily.
I was just wondering why that's in there.
Someone's vet sitting temporarily, I mean, there's just, there's just a temporary...
In case Tyce has a lot of business at his place, see, they might have to park in the street, so he wants to be sure it's covered.
Okay.
Read it as a bill. We've gone through this and over and over, and there's so many varieties of what ifs. Thank you. Bill number nineteen oh four seven. Orders establishing temporary street parking permits. Can I get a motion on the first reading?
Yes.
Walter makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Yes.
Okay, second reading, please. Bill number nineteen oh four seven. Orders establishing temporary street parking permits. Got a motion on the second reading. John makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Read it as an ordinance, please. Orders number three three seven four. Orders establishing temporary street parking permits. Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance?
Motion.
Linda makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
He's from the...
Okay, mayor, this one, go ahead and read it, but... Orders permitting, authority, mayor to negotiate terms of the executive development agreement. On, basically, this is a thing that we've done a few times. The developer developed the property next to Bank of Missouri. He spent a lot of money in site work in there, and we had initially agreed at two-hundred thousand. He put his bid up to the construction people for building roads, the sewer system, water, and all that stuff, that it's gonna be turned over to the city. And that bid prices that he got was five hundred nineteen thousand. So, if you get, we have a one percent sales tax in the city, and for that full tax, we've done this before, we rebate fifty percent of that if, on an annual basis after ten years. So if he generates five million dollars, then he would be able to get paid back on this five hundred nineteen thousand. One of these that we did was supposed to generate, I don't know what it was, but, in three years, he didn't generate enough, so he didn't get his money back. But, so, it's down on the developer that causes developments to happen, and then he can get reimbursement on the construction of the infrastructure, or his project wouldn't go forward, because it's too expensive for him to do.
You need to put a million on that line.
It's five hundred nineteen thousand eight forty-seven.
Whatever it is, you just need to fill in.
I'm gonna fill it up quick.
He's checking. He's checking.
Five hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. So that's what will be placed on that line. Five hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventy thousand. And it's up to the developer to generate that additional revenue if he wants reimbursement.
Now, you're going, we're authorizing you to do that. Now, there's some terms, if you look there, and write some blanks that you're gonna have to fill in. Signs and stuff in the contract, okay?
Okay.
The terms that we saw before that is...
So on page one of exhibit eight, it's five nineteen eight seventy, down there at the bottom.
Down there, which is, yeah.
Or some of, over ten year period.
Yeah.
On the next page, the ten-year period for the reimbursement, show the due on...
That's on the date of execution.
Yes, that's, that's from the date that they execute.
We can put on, on the date of execution into that line.
And the city's obligation is payment of the, under the development, will terminate upon either payment of a total sum of five hundred nineteen thousand eight seventy.
Yes.
To the developer, in portion of the ten-year term. The first payment would be due, basically, one year from when they sign the agreement and get it back to the city.
So you have, the next one's a dollar, and so it's, the next one will be one year from date of execution?
Yes.
And that should be in there?
Yeah.
Now, at, at...
Which you're gonna start with a ten-year time frame.
Now, three C is the date the improvements are to be completed.
And I don't know, we can say three years, four years, it depends on as he gets developments to move in there. The faster it goes, the more he'll get reimbursed on the front end. Otherwise, you know, if, we could actually give him ten years if he doesn't finish. It, you know, the total amount, the amount per year is based on...
What you're...
Revenue we generate.
What you're gonna have to negotiate is three C, three F, three G.
Well, I've got, I've got a water line retention base and all that stuff, you know. You want those numbers?
Well, when, but we, the dates all change, because the numbers we have, unless they've got...
No, I've got it here.
Okay.
Yeah, and he's got earthwork drive detention pond, which he's got detention pond and things there. He's got eighty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-eight, so if you wanna put those numbers in there. Eighty-seven thousand five sixty-eight. Sanitary sewer, he's got two hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. He's got storm water here, I don't know what the water line is, water main, water line, seventy-five thousand six twenty-five. And shared access road, which is the, it should've been...
The bank.
Drive, I guess. But some of the other, the storm water he's got, he didn't have that shared access, Egress East Road. He's got some different terms here, so. But he's got seventy-five thousand five ten for storm water, and the gas main, he's got a bore under the Y highway to get to the gas, is fifty-three thousand two ninety-seven. So some of those gotta be changed, which this allows me to do. And basically, it still comes down to if he doesn't generate the stuff, he ended up getting the money back, so.
So if we've got those numbers and have some, the only thing we've got a problem with is complete the, the improvements no later than the given date.
Yeah, it's gonna be in ten years. We could give him three years, four years, five years, I don't know. I would say that, you know, you're talking about guffeys down here, it took me a year or four years.
Ten days, ten years from the date of improvements, or ten years flat?
I, I just think the ten years flat, because I don't know how fast he's gonna go.
So it's ten years from date of execution and three C?
Okay. Yeah?
And so...
Because I'm sure he's gonna put the road and sewer and the water and that, but he's not gonna fill up the buildings, which he doesn't get reimbursed for buildings.
Okay, so that's your ten years.
So they're talking about that.
You're gonna have to get an address into, for Saint Robert Retail LLC. So we're gonna let you do that.
Okay.
We've given you authority to finish it up.
I may have that.
What's two, two?
Twenty-eight seventy, dash A, South Ingram Level, Springfield, Missouri, six five eight oh four.
Mayor, if you could forward that email to me, I can update the little tape.
Oh, okay. Sounds good.
All right, turn.
Okay.
Can you forward it, miss?
You wanna forward the tour?
No, 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 I can get it from there.
What would we be doing without all this technology?
I don't know.
We had nice enough to you two. Okay. Should be on your phone. Bill number nineteen oh four eight. An order approving the form of and authorizing the mayor to negotiate terms of development agreement between the city of Saint Robert, Missouri and Saint Robert Retail, one LLC, Patriot Plaza Project. Got a motion on the first reading. Walter makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Yes.
Got a motion for us. Michael seconds. Bill number nineteen oh four eight. An order approving the form of and authorizing the mayor to negotiate terms and execute the development agreement between the city of Saint Robert, Missouri and Saint Robert Retail, one LLC, Patriot Plaza Project. Got a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Yes.
Okay, read us an ordinance, please. Orders number three three seven five. An order approving the form of and authorizing the mayor to negotiate terms and execute the development agreement between the city of Saint Robert, Missouri and Saint Robert Retail, one LLC, Patriot Plaza Project. Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. John makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Yes.
Okay, read us an ordinance, please. Orders number three three seven five. An order approving the form of and authorizing the mayor to negotiate terms and execute the development agreement between the city of Saint Robert, Missouri and Saint Robert Retail, one LLC, Patriot Plaza Project. Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. John makes a motion. Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Okay, three point twelve, ordinance amending section seventeen oh two oh of the code of the city of Saint Robert, Missouri, you're reading. And Edna, I think this is yours.
Um, this is just amending the code to add section C, given the, the ladies up front, some type of policy or protocol, just in case we can't get a reading, the meter reader can't read the meters. So, in order, just not sending the customer bill, this is a way, well, we can bill the customer, based upon previous usage, so.
Yeah, I just average the previous use or, or like months, a year earlier, or whatever.
A previous year, yes.
And I've had this case on several of the meters, not a lot of them, but it's happened across gas, water, sewer.
We have it after gas.
Where the meter has the same readings, it didn't move from one month together, but the business or the residents had electricity or water or whatever that had. So we can now do an estimate and still bill.
And still bill.
Because they, they run a report, and it shows those zero gains or whatever, so.
Okay.
Section C is added.
Okay, ready, Tyce? Read us the bill. Bill number nineteen oh four nine. Orders amending section seventeen oh two oh of the code of the city of Saint Robert, Missouri, you're reading. Got a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion.
Second.
Todd, second. Clarification, discussion, call or roll please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
I just wanna know, did it make any difference about the season in which you would give that three-month estimate?
Well, if we, it may make a difference, so that's why we use, we can also go back to the last, the previous year usage.
Oh, okay.
So it'll be a comparison in the same, same season.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Todd?
Some of the people got, what do they call it, billing, level billing, or whatever.
Budget billing.
Budget billing, where it's the same, we just get billed the same, that they always are, and then once they meet their repair or run through. Okay, we got everybody, second reading, please.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Yes.
Second reading.
Not so easy, though.
Yeah.
Bill number nineteen oh four nine. Orders amending section seventeen oh two oh of the code of the city of Saint Robert, Missouri, you're reading, Edna.
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Okay, read his ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three three seven six, an ordinance amendment section seventeen oh two of the code of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, meter reading.
Okay, get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Is that Walter?
Yes.
Okay, and Michael, clarification, discussion, call the real place.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Is this going to change the way the meters are going to be read, or they still going to be read with the little electronic device that's in our meters?
There's no change to the reading?
No.
The way that they're reading now?
Okay, yes.
That's how they define it, because when he goes out there and he goes to read it, and it doesn't change from one month to the other, something's wrong with the meter if they have electricity.
I mean, there's two different ways you can read a meter, if it doesn't work there, then it can, I was just wondering if this ordinance was going to change the way they were going to read?
No.
Okay, yes.
Okay, three thirteen, ordinance amendment section seven twenty-five point one eight oh of the code of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, water rates, same kind of thing if the water meter isn't working. We can ask him if the bill.
Bill number nineteen oh five oh, an ordinance amendment section seventy-two, seventy-two five one eight oh of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, water rates.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, Todd seconds, clarification, discussion, call the real place.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Second reading.
Bill number nineteen oh five oh, an ordinance amendment section seventy-five, one eight oh of the code of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, water rates.
Okay, get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, John second, clarification, discussion, call the real place.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Okay, read his ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three three seven seven, an ordinance amendment section seventy-five, one eight oh of the code of the city of St. Robert, Missouri, water rates.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, Walter seconds, clarification, discussion, call the real place.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes, ma'am.
And Susan?
Yes.
Okay, three point one four, ordinance with CM Archer for the municipal wastewater treatment plant, twice you want to explain nuance, I guess, of this? We thought we were going to have the formal approval, and you got to call them, what, ten to five, I guess? It's something more than that.
What we've done on this is approving it subject to the condition of FER and FEMA, I'm sorry, FEMA and CM approval. Because they take the position that as part of the grant process, they, CM particularly has the right to overlook and approve the contract with our engineer and make sure we follow the competitive rules which we have. So what I've done here is made this conditional, the mayor is going to execute it when it's properly approved by the people that, you know, FEMA and CM, so we can keep our grant money, so we don't want to have to have a special meeting to talk about it, so as soon as they prove it, he can tell it where we're going to the races.
We're going to get it turned back into an approval, and it's ninety-nine, ninety percent sure it's going to happen, just got to get that formal approval. We thought we had it called, it was on us, he said, I'll get to you by five o'clock, and he called Ten Tel, and said he's got everything, but he has to review it, so he'll review it and have it for us anymore. Okay, read his bill, please.
Bill number nineteen oh five one, ordinance authorizing mayor to execute contract with CM Archer, PC for municipal wastewater treatment plant project.
Get a motion on the first reading. Motion, Michael makes a motion, John seconds, clarification, discussion, call the real place.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number nineteen oh five one, ordinance authorizing mayor to execute contract with CM Archer, PC for municipal wastewater treatment plant project.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Walter makes a motion, Todd seconds, clarification, discussion, call the real place.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
Read his ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three three seven eight, an ordinance authorizing mayor to execute contract with CM Archer, PC for municipal wastewater treatment plant project.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, John seconds, clarification, discussion, call the real place.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Susan?
One of the, just hitting another budget for two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, uh, two hundred and eighty-two thousand for the fire truck, and of course, we got seventy thousand dollars for the old tanker that they picked up and taken away. They are picking that up, I believe tomorrow or Thursday, and it should be in service by Saturday. The guys coming in Saturday with the put the radios in, so they'll be going to Kansas City, Wednesday or Thursday, when they go to call, to pick that up. So we got the check, and it was in the bills, I forgot to highlight that. Okay, another one, Luke's going to watch finance, I don't know, we don't have any changes, we've got the auditors here, I'm sure Edna will talk about that. And Public Works, he's out here, had some family illness, and monthly services, Todd?
I'm not sure when we need a, the next meeting, but we did meet last night and a couple of times, one of the things was the ordinance for the, for parking, which you guys already looked at. The second thing is, just a couple heads ups on, Chief's looking, did you ever talk to him about that? Chief's looking at a vehicle, ladder truck, it's going to be coming up pretty soon, he's putting together, you know, a bid for that. Our truck is a two thousand one or two thousand two, it's reaching the end of its life, and maintenance costs are racking up on it, you know, we spent, and it was that turntable, I think it was last year or the year before, we spent a bunch of money on that, and so he's looking at getting together a bid for that truck, and and a thing to keep in mind, the chief, when he comes and he talks to us, they're talking about custom cab trucks that are made specifically for the intended purpose of being a fire truck, and not just a, you know, a dump truck with a cab on it that looks like a fire truck, so so that's, you know, just, just kind of a heads up that that's going to be coming by us pretty soon. Another thing, for those of you that get out and look at some things in the, in the city, he's going to be making his own, or they are going to make it internally, a fire or a smokehouse, so they can go out and they can do some actual training with smoke, and me and Anita went, was that a couple of years ago, I guess, Anita, we went into the trailer they had down there.
What happened to that?
It had fire in it. It was moved, and.
I'll tell you what.
Okay.
Yeah, so Chief's going to make his own, he's going to put it close, so they can train, I think Crocker wants to come down and, and train with them too, since they got a all-volunteer department up there, but it's a neat thing, and they're required to do it once a month, although they said they're not going to do it with real fires like we went in, it was kind of cool.
Todd got locked in when we did it, he couldn't get it out.
We were just locked in temporarily, he got out, so.
Like this tanker, we ordered this tanker just about a year ago, I think we ordered it in June last year, and we're just getting it. The ladder truck takes a little bit over a year, so that's why we're getting ready, so as that thing approaches twenty years, and we're spending anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five thousand in repairs, and I think it's still only got like ten thousand miles, so it's a high maintenance, expensive ladder truck. This one is a two axle, with just one axle in the back, where the one we got currently has two, which makes it a lot heavier, harder to turn, and a lot, so they're they're really looking at what we need for our streets and getting into the parking lots around the hotels.
Yeah, and that's, and what the mayor just said there too, with getting in and out of hotels, that's the need for that truck, is those hotels, it's not typically, you know, the structures, but you know, all the hotels that we have require that ladder truck.
You said it's only got, the one we got now's only got ten thousand miles on it?
Yeah, I'm guessing.
But do you think we'll be able to sell it to somebody for?
Well, he's, he's thinking that we can get more points for ISO on our fire inspection with the insurance company, so we're going to look at that, but we're still talking that, because it is taking so much to maintain it, to have it sit and be a.
Somebody may not have one, if they could get one a lot cheaper.
That's right, yeah, and we paid a million dollars for that one twenty years ago, so that's a lot bigger truck than what we're getting, although the reach is still the same, hundred seventy feet, so.
That's, just, I mean, that's just kind of a heads up for what we talked about last night, so that's all I have, for that.
I don't know when they're going to have it, but we are going to be have to have one and have a after-action report on the outdoor sportsman thing, because I think there's some things we need to talk about for next year on that, but I.
Yeah, from February to March to May.
Yeah, to try and make it.
Good one, yeah.
So we'll have to get with Gene, and he'll tell us when he wants to have that meeting, but we'll have to have one with an after-action report for that.
Okay, comments, Paul, and then we'll start with John down here, Susan at the spot.
John doesn't have any comments.
John doesn't have any comments?
John doesn't have any.
Michael, got any comments? Walter?
Been a good month, and I've seen a lot of the work that the city is doing, and I've learned a lot, just being surrounded by you guys, and I really appreciate that. Oh, yeah, it really is, it really is, but it's repression.
I just actually came up with a comment, and you don't start throwing things at me. The city website, I just kind of went to it, I think it kind of needs a little polishing maybe, I think it's got some names for aldermen that are in it now that we need to work on.
Why can't you check those pictures the very first time?
I couldn't get the pictures to switch out when I got them, so.
And, yeah, I know he's gone, you know, so if we get, we can look at that, and also, just a question, not a, I don't know for sure, but are the codes that are on the site, the website, are the ordinances and everything on there, I mean, in the, in city regulations, land use and all that stuff, are they the most current, do we know?
They should be.
Or could we?
Yes.
Because it's sent over. It's emailed to them to update the code, every time we have a code change, we email the ordinance over.
I was just curious, so just something else.
The codes are.
They should be updated.
We send them to Sullivan, and they update them.
And the, and it's accessed?
No.
We access Sullivan, we go through.
E-code, yeah.
E-code, it's Sullivan.
That was odd.
Linda?
Uh, no, I don't think so. I'll try to come up with something, okay?
Be frank here, Linda. Susan?
Yeah, we had a grand tour of the city, and St. Robert is awesome, it's huge, and the mayor has library plans, I can't wait to see what the next two years is going to be like.
Seven hour tour.
Yeah, seven hour tour.
Just like the SS Minnow.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
City clerk?
Community, oh.
And finance, Susan?
I guess I can say something on the deputy city clerks. As far as, my sister just sent me an email, and the president declared May the fifth and May the eleventh as public servants, service recognition week, so thank you for all you do. I just got the email. On the finance side, auditors are here the entire week, so we're busy, busy. Also, the reported taxable sales in the city for the month of May, year-to-date is ninety-nine million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred, four hundred and seventeen dollars. This is at an eleven point three eight percent over May twenty eighteen.
Over May, but what from the first of the year?
Of twenty eighteen.
Eleven percent up over tw- the same time?
Well, six percent over last year, eleven percent over last month, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Same, same time last year, the month.
So we're up six percent on the year.
Correct, and that, and that amount, as far as the general sales tax is concerned, is about fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Two police cars.
Yes, two police cars. The, the big thing, from two thousand eight to current, the, the sales tax revenue has stayed relatively flat, except for about the last three, four years, and we've been slowly creeping up, and if we did six percent this year, that would be a great improvement. In sixteen to seventeen, there was only twenty-seven dollars difference, total amount in sales tax revenue.
Wow.
There was two point five million, but it was within twenty-seven dollars from the next, so not, not, not any growth in the numbers, it'd be twenty-seven dollars difference. Okay, what else you got, Edna?
The April's financial report will be emailed after the final month and entries are applied. Also, just to know that tomorrow is disconnect day for non-payment of utility bills, so if it was not paid by tomorrow, before the guys go out, you will be disconnected, okay, meter reads rather, and the balance in the operating account stands at two million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, twenty-six dollars.
We've got down below two million.
Correct.
And Chief Creighton, I know he called you just part of this.
He was working on a case reviewing video, mayor.
And the fire chief has got some family issues he's working on. Public Works Steve called me just before, family illness, an emergency. Don, I guess, has a sore throat or something?
He had an infected tooth and went to the doctor.
Okay, Jay?
Jay, looks like you're man of the hour. Yeah, definitely.
Public Works, you got a pair of plats.
Can I just say one thing, mayor? Now, can I say one thing, please keep Cam Fincher and her family in your prayers.
Oh, yeah, her husband died.
The death of her husband, Steve.
Visitation's eleven to one on Thursday, February one month. Good evening, how you doing, Jay?
April tonnage was four thousand seventy-five point fifty million tons. We had a DNR inspection late in March, but I missed the last meeting, so I didn't get a chance to get up there yet, and we were paying compliance. The hydraulic pump was replaced on the loader last Thursday, I haven't received a bill for that yet, and.
The backup loader, is that getting returned to?
No, sir, we're still waiting on a case to come down and give us an estimate on it. Tony gave me approximately what he thought it was, and that's what we told the case, and they're, it is having been had to look at it yet. Anita? If Tony thinks it is, it's probably not going to be, it's going to be very expensive, maybe not within the.
Size of the machine?
Yeah.
Okay.
There was a, a request of mayor that is put extra step out, it occurred in spring and in the fall. There was eleven and a half tons approximately from St. Robert on that, which was the biggest we've seen in at least ten years.
Wow.
Waynesville was actually twenty-seven tons, did it on that Thursday following hours, which was also the biggest we've had in about ten years, so there was almost a, over the thirty-dollar, or thirty-eight ton increase over what our whole time is.
Wow.
And that's all that.
Can you post it on the case?
Yes.
Good evening, sitting attorney?
Couple things, Carrie's got a lawsuit against.
Oh, crap. Have some questions, if you need to get with.
We're right about that, so we're here on the trailer park, and it owes us, it's got everybody connected. We've got a lot going on, I, I propose we send our Energizer bunny mayor on a long vacation so we can get some rest, but other than that, we've just got a lot, but I think probably most of it's closed session.
You see the list I made up today, right?
He just wrote that.
Most of it we did tonight.
No.
We did. Oh, and the lady, we had a lady that we have been working with her, turning, that has a trailer mobile home on our right away, but we need somebody from her according to the span streets, we finally got those easements closed, we traded easements, and it's cheap, and it's only.
We asked that ordinance to ask that question.
Yeah, we passed it last time, so I want to check with.
What does everybody have, Brandon, Mark, and Steve at eight thirty this morning? We're in the press on that road.
These two got this, so I'm sure I'm going to get caught between suits.
They are listening, but.
I could bring up all the contracts and licenses update, which Carrie and I have talked already.
Is the road that runs between the apartment buildings a city road?
Yes.
Well, it's not maintained very well.
Thanks.
I thought maybe it was private property.
They bought a bid this morning of a hundred thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars, I think it was.
Okay.
Okay, to go all the way from Burson over there by the fire station, all the way down over the hill to that trailer, and then up Carter Street from the apartments all the way to Jan's house or to your house.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
At the end of, at the end of the street there where it's Burson, is there any way they can put something there to keep those, I mean, if you don't know the road, it's like you could drive into that big ditch.
Yeah, they fixed that last year somewhat, it was a lot deeper last year.
Okay.
Yeah, we spent four thousand dollars, we already paid for that.
I'll go down there and look.
You haven't seen them?
I don't think so, I don't go down that way too often because the road's bad.
Well, yeah, we spent four thousand dollars, we spent last, last summer fixing that drainage and filling it in, but it's still like foot down. But they're supposed to do some more when they come in and do that, we talked about that this morning. Okay, anything else, Todd?
No, a couple things close.
Yes, I'd like to recognize Linda, she was recognized by Lieutenant Governor as a volunteer.
Wouldn't get invited, but.
The Lieutenant Governor, I didn't, I didn't even want to go, I told him I wasn't going. But the Lieutenant Governor's Volunteer Award, Senior, Senior Citizens Volunteer Award, because everybody that got it had to be over a certain age. Not sure what that, well, I know it had to be at least seventy, because, I mean, I mean, you, seventy, work goes in there, because, but I don't know, I think maybe fifty and over, because some of those people lived awful young, or else they've been living a lot better life than me, one or the other.
Yeah, we'll just say it as that.
But to tell you the truth, I, I felt honored to get the award, but boy, if you're up there and you're listening to some of the things those people do, some of the things they volunteer to do, it's like I thought, man, what am I doing here? Some of them just do amazing things for their cities. But I was happy to get it. Congratulations for your award, and Teresa Cook had surgery today on her knee, she's in Ozark Hospital, she thinks she'll be out by Thursday, so she's trying to get some relief from that. If you noticed when you came in, we have a new office on the big sign in front of City Hall, we also had the sign painted and refurbished some. BA added, we added BA to the sign, and they'll reimburse us for that, so that's been done. Been working with Gary O'Day on the CDBG grant, getting that off. We had the cook-off and our first annual bake sale over the weekend, and it was a success, we never thought. How was that bacon cake? Well, you know? I don't know. Oh. We had a kids group and an adult group, and the kids group was huge, we never dreamed for our first one, we'd have those kind of. The bake sale was good, the bake thing was a, contest was a good con, was a good one. So like the mayor said, we've been working with BA and CM, I'm sure we can discuss that more in closed session. Other than that, just been keeping busy, we'll have OEA, we'll come to Office Economic Adjustment, I'll be here this month and go over the OEA grant we got, he'll be here for a day and a half with us, so.
Mr. Holland?
Mr. Holland. So that's, I have closed, and that's it.
Great, thank you. I already talked about the fire truck, that's probably the next big thing, we do have a lot of meetings, I don't know whether all coming from the last, next couple of weeks. CoUSA got started on post on the first of May, which is the two cities in the Plasky County Sewer District, eleven employees, they're out there working, they're up and running, and got all new equipment and everything, and we meet every Tuesday for that organization, working with American Water, and everything seemed to be going pretty smooth, some equipment shortages that are needed that we didn't have, I guess, and so we ordered those today, supposed to be delivered tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, and, but it seems to be going very well out there for CoUSA, so our involvement with the post from local events. We also took a tour of the trash, the dumpsters, the mess halls, dining facilities, I guess, and also did some other stuff on post, and it's just interesting to see all the things that happen out there at Fort Leonard Wood, and how that all operates and stuff, so with that, we've, we got some invoices in on different stuff for the next council meeting, so we'll just move forward, so the next regular board meeting will be, will be main on post at five o'clock right here.